I call to order a regular city council meeting on this Wednesday, October fifteenth, twenty one five. About thirty P M. Please stand for the. Ladies and our flag. Doctor Proctor, would you leave the Senate place, please?
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America. To the Republican Party's thanks, one nation, under one law, in the business hall, with liberty and justice for all.
We call upon you, Senator.
Councilor Miller. Yes, Councilor Maybert.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Miller, here, Councilor Proctor.
President.
Here, you have a phone.
First item to consider is the approval of the agenda, or entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion number six.
Councilor Miller. Hi, Councilor Maybert.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Proctor.
Hi.
Next item is a consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion number six.
Councilor Proctor.
Aye.
Councilor Miller.
Aye.
Councilor Maybert.
Yes, ma'am.
And Councilor Lisa.
Aye.
Motion.
Next item, item six of public comments to every citizen from. The city of Redoza Downs would like to address the governing body.
I wish.
Okay, start.
Thank you, council, for letting me address you. Because it's the understanding, nothing happens in our city without you either passing. Issues or failing issues. So with that in mind, I have some questions because I think there's some incomplete information that is given to some of the constituents. And one thing I wanted to address, I work on the Economic Development Committee, which is a very good committee, we've put many things through council, which have not passed. We got a line item for spending them, but everything else we have presented has been failed by this council. The one thing in particular. That I concern about, because talking to other people on committees, they agree we need more correspondence between us to know what's going on, to facilitate and help each other. We had a computer program, a Pacer program, that was fifty thousand dollars a month. That would help all departments in the building, uh, city, all departments. You turned that down. It had two professional counselors that would give us, help us with studies, directions, and blah, 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 those kinds of things that we would need to know. And not only. Traffic on Highway seventy, which is a perturbant of mine also, this speed, yes, is important, but we have the state police, we have the sheriff. Our police department needs to be in neighborhoods. You give us reports of how many tickets are given, but not how many robbers, drugs, deaths, those kinds of things that happen, which need to be addressed in our community. But back to the Pacer, that was a thousand dollars a month. You gave a raise to our employees, we have some very good employees, and those raises, I'm sure, were well deserved. There was one, I have no question, it's the one I'm to judge. The salary was doubled from a thousand to two thousand dollars. And I'm just saying, if we had that money, why did we not look at this computer program that would help all departments? Not only that, that department strips our budget of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars or thereabouts. So I'm just saying, where are my, our priorities and how do we answer to our constituents? Thing that I have is the budget, we're so frugal with our money, but are we spending it where it needs to be spent for the whole. Communities, not just a certain area or a certain department.
Okay, second is, sir. Do you want else? Want to address the government. Hey, councilors at Texas, in the. Counselors' comments. Yes, councilor.
I'd like to address this, chairman. For starters, the court is not a branch of the government. It's not anything to do with our city council. There's three branches of government, which is judicial, legislative, and executive. The judicial branch is on its own, taking a thousand dollars and reimbursing the judge, the way she hasn't seen. That particular position within the city, it's not seen a raise in twenty five years. And this person is doing more than anybody has ever done. But the, the judicial part, the court part of the budget has nothing to do with anything else, with, with anything that goes on in the city. So it's not like we can take a thousand dollars over here and then give it to the court. It's too sorry, thanks.
Where does the money come from? Where does the budget come from?
All of the money is generated by our gross receipts and revenues that come into the city. But the court is independent of council, so not approving something for your committee has nothing to do with the court. Also. In, in other, I'm going to committee meetings too, of the other committees, there's another committee that when they heard about that particular program said, oh, we have access to that program where I work, we'd be happy to give you that information for for non thousand dollars a month. So there's a lot to look at.
Uh, let me respond to that, that was a person, okay. Uh, one is the tax, I don't.
All right, uh, okay, I've been, I've been concerned about this, and I'm getting a signal from people to know more about. The procedure. We're, we're into a conversation here that, uh, all we need is just the comments. And the comments. There's a problem stood up to play. Okay. Uh, councilor.
I have something to report, thanks. Uh, we had a great cleanup on Saturday. I've heard we filled one dumpster down there at least, uh, we had about twenty five sign up. Where it's Mayor Gary Williams, he showed off, he picked up all kinds of trash, and he, he really did a good job, and all of the other volunteers, I want to thank everybody. My friend Evan's there all the time to help me, and, uh. Pam William, Williams, she helped me the day before, everything, all that day. I want to, and he's, oh my gosh, he didn't leave us all day, he did a heck of a job too, and all of Joey's employees, I appreciate him, Joey. They got a heck of a good job. So, we're showing off, we've got a lot done, a lot of trash picked up, and I want to thank everybody, you know. Our people came too, cleaned up around the food station and all over out here. So, thank everybody, it was good, and I feel good about people together and helping our community, thank you, everybody.
Any other councilor's comments? Okay, that takes us to the biggest comments and trying to. Adjust the way that we can do this without. Getting motions and all this kind of thing, and I think that we'll be okay. Uh, under mayor's comment, because we have someone that's got, the youngster here, needs to get moved up so that they can. Conduct business and. Get out of here, so I would like to move item G, under no business. To mayor's, uh, comments. As Scott was saying, I'm not positive, but I'm sure the attorney or the clerk will do that, we think it is, I, I listed with one of the two.
But you can say probably should have been on any of the agenda. But I don't think there's any other thing going to begin. But I, I would do a promotion. Miss White, a motion to address item G to move on.
I'll make a motion, I move item G. To mayor's comments, mayor's comments, let me see.
I have a motion and a say. Go, go.
Councilor Lisa. Hey. Councilor Miller. Councilor Maybert.
Yes, ma'am.
And Councilor Proctor.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. President, I'm, we're, uh, which one I was going to, uh, present information.
Um, I, I think I go with chief one, but I'm, I'm, but, um, Mr. Mayor, members of councils, I, it's not for me, it's a, my issue. Chief Texas, as regards on why you can't make it tonight, he has a personal matter. So, um, I would, um, I think G moved up is a combination of our two to, part-time positions back into a full-time position. About, uh, I would say about three years ago, it was a full-time position, and it was this, which are part-time, two part-time positions to fill a need. Uh, a secondary and also try and get a, another firefighter going. Uh, we were, we're closely merged that back into a full-time position, just to try and get a different. Group. Trying, we haven't had anyone really apply for the part-time firefighter, maybe get it top competitive. The Ria Doso starts their firefighters at seventeen dollars. Um, we're asking that there are four-time persons. That's, that's partially certified at the bare minimum, which would be. Either their, um, firefighter one and two, but has money, you know, or their E M T be licensed, licensed. That would be considered a part-time employee, and we're asking them to start at seventeen fifty, which will make them competitive with Ria Doso and all the surrounding. Firefighters in New Mexico. Um, once they get forty certified, which means they have their firefighter one and two, A and O, and their E M T B, New Mexico license. We asked, we're asking that that pay rate be bumped up to twenty dollars, just trying to get someone in here to help alleviate our, uh, fourth, one, full-time member. Because, as we all know, running department with one person is hard, and. The volunteers do a very great job, I'm a volunteer, I'm here helping out chief tonight. And having a second full-time employee will help alleviate that problem, that way we can all have some breaks from responding twenty-four seven, which we provide to this city possibly. There any questions?
Okay, I, I noticed on that, uh. For me, people know a lot more than the mayor on this, I notice this has approval of. Uh, should this be for the council, uh, discussion and possible action, or just, uh. What to do here? Approval. Yeah. Should, should we have?
This was the game.
Two and one, they just want to take two part-timers and make a full-time position out of it.
It is an action, I like that.
Okay.
Yeah, let me ask the. Bruce, when you were the assistant chief, was it a full-time position?
It was.
And so they split that full-time position into.
No, we, we have always been authorized to full-time positions, even back when I was full-time. Back when, um, Chief Burgum was chief, he requested and achieved a spreading that, well, second full-time position into two part-time positions. One for secretary and one for hopefully another firefighters that we never got. When we've been advertising, we have no, any interest mainly because the part-time is not lucrative to the fire service. And he, he says he's. So that's why we want to try and merge them back together, or maybe try and get another interested person by a full-time basis instead of.
So of all the qualifications necessary to be the chief. One certificate is not required, it's recommended, but not required, it's E M T. And if we get into, back into the E M T, E M T service, it opens a whole new can of worms. If we have certified E M T, we have to have a doctor on staff, we have to have.
Ma'am, um, that's, we, we're going to address that next council meeting that will be on the agenda, I'm pretty sure you can answer, again, your, your question answered again.
Okay, so you can get some on the agenda, but the councilors can't, how do you do that?
We are.
How do you, how do you, how do you agenda?
Because the one that, the one that we put on, it's going to be requested to be on next, the agenda.
Okay, maybe we're doing this backwards, maybe we should talk about that first, and the other thing that I'd like to note is that the requirements for this job are, the person who's serving as chief, our fire chief right now, does not qualify for this job. He doesn't qualify for this job, he's a, he's still eight years away from falling. But how can we have anybody in a position supervising someone with least fall of intentions when the supervisor doesn't plead the fall?
And state attorney, and you have a.
Thank you.
I'm sure, here is one.
Well, we could keep it to me. My opinion is that the task, the tasks and the requirements for this job are more than we can talk about, we don't have anybody who qualifies.
Ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I've had a few residents calling me and very concerned that even if I have an E M T at night. And if this position would help that. I think it would be wonderful, because I've heard Ria Doso is taking thirty minutes sometime to get here for a call, that's uncalled for. Our people could die in that amount of time, we need, uh, E M T twenty-four hours, we do, and it's very important. I want to tell you what I found out today, consolidated dispatch, from June fourth to, uh, October fourth. You know how many calls Ria Doso Downs had? One thousand six hundred and thirty calls. A lot of them were probably injured people. And if we can't tend to our residents and our, uh, guests that come to Ria Doso Downs, you know, we're not doing our job. We need E M T twenty-four hours a day. I think it's very important that we have somebody that can do that job. And can be an E M T, and it's so important that he has a full-time person. We need that very badly.
Councilor Lisa.
Thank you, um, so, Councilor Miller, we have an emergency response team down there, right by the hospital, they're on call twenty-four hours a day, they sleep there, in their, in their position. We've never had a full-time E M T person in this week, in seventeen years. We did.
We, we've actually had multiple. Back in the day, um, Chief Ellard was a full-time.
Who?
He was a full-time E M T after, also during the time, we had firefighter Billy Quest, who was also a full-time E M T. Also during that time, I can't remember his last name, but Shaw was also a full-time E M T. And that's been since I've been here for the past six years, so we've had full-time E M Ts twenty-four seven.
But isn't the first responder the emergency people down at?
The E M S?
Yes.
They are considered our first response, but as Councilor Miller pointed out, they can take up to thirty minutes or longer, depending on the call and the call volume. Unfortunately, we might be their pri, they, they might be our primary response, but their primary district is Ria Doso. So if their first help vehicle gets towed out at the same time as we get towed out. Then we come into an issue of, are they going to Ria Doso, or they can we do the dance? Most of the times it'll be Ria Doso, and we will get the second help truck, which during the day usually isn't a problem, because they run eighteen-hour shifts for the second help truck. But when, you know, our big issue is when they're on that fourth, fifth call out in the county, where they're calling people in off-duty to come in. That is where our big issue comes in, that's where having a fire department, that's a first responders, able to do the basic first aid, even not at the E M T level, able to assess, evaluate, and determine. What is the critical nature of this patient? Uh, we are capable, if necessary, starting a helicopter if necessary, that we can transport them to them, but if we get on scene, we're going to, before that fifth out call, if we get on scene, we determine. If it's critical enough, we get the helicopter started, which is a minimum thirty-five minute, uh, tra, uh, arrival time.
Do you know the statistics for emergency calls where they responded versus the Downs responding? Because I've heard that it's like ninety-nine percent, they get there first, and then the Downs gets there second.
Is that true? Because I have responded to many calls within that, it's, it is almost that every one of them will fly out of the city.
Yes.
That is true. And this conversation you're having is not about the investment, it's about making a permanent position to take those thousand calls to, spot by himself.
Yeah.
You during a disaster, you work twenty-four hours a day, I was out there with it.
All right, I want to give Councilor Proctor the floor, but I know that you said you heard. Yes, sir.
Okay, if we need to bring E M Ts, then we need to change the job description of the chief. Okay, chapter script of the chief, right off the bat, says, E M T certified, firm, but not necessary. This defines it as being necessary, and you have to have a choice between one and two firefighter versus a E M T, I'd say go with the E M T qualification. Because he can always get E M T, takes longer to graduate than what it does one or two times, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good job. Oh, yes, um, thank you. On our volunteer list, we also have paramedics and intermediates already certified on our volunteer list. One thing I'm going to address about the chief not being certified, he doesn't have to be certified, he's a supervisor, he doesn't need to know, uh, for able to push my needs or not. Yeah, this will come up at the next, when we discuss E M S, but it, it will come up, that, that's why we have a medical draft.
Councilor Proctor. I think, I think we talked about this enough in the meeting, they were here, because we have to have the next meeting before this ever gets into our process. So we can do one or two things, we can postpone this until we have the next meeting, before they describe, you know, for everything, to understand of this council. And then approve both of them at the same time, if that's necessary.
Well, the council, I'll do this if you, you, uh. Send us what you would like to see. All right. Bruce has said, uh, you can. Give us more information in the next meeting. So I'll, I'll be glad to put this on the agenda for the next meeting, if that's satisfactory.
Yes, sir.
Is all this is for is to, to fix a full-time position, and we're just going all different directions here, we just need to merge two part-times to a one-time.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
And I agree, we're, we're making something very difficult, that is not that difficult.
That's. So empower anybody to point down the next meeting. With what? We're not going to get anybody to apply for it. We're not.
No, but they just want the position, so if they happen to get somebody.
That's understandable.
Okay, I think, I think, okay.
Yeah.
Hold on, oh, uh. So what are you, what are you saying, uh, council?
And then let's go ahead and hold on, Dan. I'll make a motion to approve. The two part-times into, uh, full-time position.
That, that motion.
Yeah, motion and a say.
Uh, Councilor. Councilor Lisa.
Before we vote, I thought before that we talked about close twenty minutes for seven months meeting, and.
We didn't take this well, councilor.
Oh, they don't.
Councilor Maybert.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Miller.
Aye.
Councilor Proctor.
Aye.
Motion carries to version two.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your councils, thank you.
Bye, buddy.
Bye.
Get that kiss, man.
I'm sorry, sorry about bringing you.
No, 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 no.
I wish I would see you.
Okay, ready, say bye.
The, uh. Okay, the, uh, next item. And will be, uh, unfinished business.
Big, biggest comments, Mayor.
Uh, I just had my one.
Oh.
I gave.
He gave his time for, for that, oh, dear, you know, to be proven.
So unfinished business, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, a resolution of the city of Redoza Downs governing body. Approving a salary adjustment for the deputy city clerk.
Make a motion, uh, stating that we're. I'll say it.
And I, I would like, uh, to add to that. We had some discussion, and I think we decided that to make that retroactive back to September twenty-second, is that correct?
I don't remember the date, but yeah, the. The, the date, it's a date that, that Gavis actually took over the, in Florida.
So this, this actually, I won't bring that up because that, uh, has to do with, um, a referendum. September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, is for these, for when the salary adjustment would start, yes, yes.
So, Mayor.
Yes.
Now that we're in the discussion phase of the process. On the chart that we have here as of October the tenth, this position of deputy clerk, not the interim, but the deputy clerk, was making, uh, twenty-two oh two, and with a dollar fifty raise, do I understand then? Or it would be twenty-three fifty-two?
No, councilor, it's, uh, the twenty fifty-two is what it was making, the last meeting, the dollar fifty, brought it up to the twenty-two.
Okay, so.
But this is just for the interim, the interim part, because, so as soon as that tenure is exhausted, then January first, uh, that ends. This is just a temporary till December, just.
Well, no, it's not actually temporary till December, Mayor, uh, councilors, it is in effect until you appoint a certified, a qualified, um, clerk, which could be. February or January, depending on.
But just to be clear, when she's no longer the interim, she'll be going back to the twenty-eight.
As it, as it may be increased in time to.
Right.
Okay.
Your phone, there.
Yeah.
Councilor Miller.
Aye.
Councilor Proctor.
Aye.
Councilor Maybert.
Yes, ma'am.
And Councilor Lisa.
Aye.
Next item is new business, Adam A. With the county manager. Update on the thinning process. County manager is here, and that is Jason Burns.
You couldn't spell my name, sir, I needed to, he was a, he came just there.
Sometimes I prefer it that way, well, you can't remember who I am.
Yes, sir.
I had quite a day yesterday with the county and forest service.
Yeah, it was a definitely a good day, um, and I'd like to ask your permission from you, Mr. Mayor and Council, if you allow me to give updates on not only the, the thing, but other projects we have going on as well, if that would be acceptable.
How long it's going to take?
Oh, I'm, I'm quick, sir, we'll get in and out, we have a lot of time. I'm not, I'm not one for long meetings, so, um, with that, uh, as Mayor brought up, we did have a very good turnout the other day for our. Wildland Fire prevention initiative, which is our barrier project, we coordinated with Joey's folks, and we're having your work that the property we're starting on is on Ria Doso Downs property, right up there by, uh, Inspiration Heights, by the water towers. So we're going to thin that entire property as a protection barrier for Ria Doso Downs, and it's going to go all the way across the southern end of Ria Doso Downs and, um, Ria Doso, so that's going to be really good for the area, we're really looking forward to that. With that, we're going to be coordinating with several. Um, with that, we're going to be coordinating with several um, property owners along that identified barrier. You'd be able to get into that property and have a fighting chance when we have a next fire, so. Um, that is started, it is signed off, we got the notice received the other day, that afternoon after we did the uh. Little tree cutting, um, we wrote the P O, we're, we're off and running. So I know we've been talking about that for a while, so it's good to report that we're making progress on that. Um. The next thing I'd like to move into is our real safe program, we had a meeting here a week or so ago and had a fairly good turnout. Um, you know, Mr. Mayor, you and the council have experienced some of the. Folks that have come out with concerns to the, the buyout program and a potential buyout program. And that was the message that we sent them with the other day was guys, we have a plan, we have a process. We have a proposal that we've submitted to our partners at the federal and state level. Now we need to communicate that this is an important program for the area. Um, there were some hard conversations that were had the other day, and there will be some hard conversations there if this program moves forward. Um, but it will be a benefit for those folks that need it. So, we did have that meeting, we are going to have a follow-up meeting in November at some point. As we give a little more time, get a little more closer to session, and try to get that fund, it will also give us time to see what's going to happen. If this is going to start again or if it's going to remain closed, because essentially that's what this is waiting on, is the approval and disapproval of federal budget with N R C S. So, um, we will have another public meeting, I'll make sure we coordinate that with Ms. Selena and Joey. So we get good folks out and everybody's out there, but we did have a good turnout. And it did get emotional, but this is kind of what happened, so what I would ask you as you're talking to your constituents. Um, in a recovery period and anybody that's uh. On any programs to make sure they're communicating with their state caseworkers, there, there are folks that are. Talking to them and helping them, because if they don't come to them, if they don't talk to them, if they're not responsive. They're going to assume that they've got the help they need and take them off any programs that they have, okay? So encourage them to be very open and communicate often with the state folks, with the federal folks who are up. And if we can help any assistance, please bless them. Yes, sir.
Uh, today was the last day, right? For what? The cutoff for any damages or?
Well, so.
I'm just going by the paper I got, but.
It's, I understand, so that's. When, when you deal with D H S E M and FEMA, there's, there's several shades gray. There's several different programs that, that.
You're good man.
Work for that, and there's. It depends on which one, but forty-eight eighty-six, which is the current one based on the flood that happened this year. That ongoing assessment for recovery work is still ongoing. Now, I think today what you have was probably the last day to submit for emergency recovery work, anything that you need now, that's an emergency work. But I know Joey and even us, we're still doing assessments and smells and coordination with state and federal folks to get our projects in. So there's several different programs, several different pots of money that you draw from. Um, as far as the emergency folks, the ones that you have women in some hotels. Those programs are ongoing as long as they will continue to be responsible with their case workers. Because we did have a little situation this weekend that we responded to, and got one of those taken care of and, you know, life happens.
Yeah, because I had some people tell me they kicked them out of the motel because they'd run out of money or something.
And they didn't run out of money, and that's kind of where this is coming from. When your caseworker's calling you to set up meetings, be sure you make those meetings, because it's, it's important, and this is all. Including me included, we have our governmental processes that we have to go through. That, as it seems like it's bureaucracy and it's unnecessary to take. It's also a point of maintaining transparency so we don't have voiceful or inefficient state. So that's why we have to go through these to ensure that there's not, but waste. As part of just being a government employee and a government entity, we've got to jump through our hoops to make sure we're playing by the rules and we're not. That, that folks aren't taking advantage of the process, so.
So if they got anything else they need to get out there first.
Make sure they, make sure they talk to their folks, make sure that you're talking to your state workers, make sure you're talking, and there's still lots of resources in town. If there's anybody that needs something, go to the recovery center that's still in the uh, the mall. That by the call, yes, sir, that's still where they have recovery, the FEMA center, go down and ask for help, D H S E M and FEMA both still have. Several assets and folks in town that are, that are prepared willing to help. And if they can't get past that, have them get in touch with us, we'll get them pointed in right away. We're here to help and make sure nobody goes without till we get something on the hook for this dude. Um. I already kind of talked on the next one I was going to, which is recovery, there's several of these programs coming in. With infrastructure projects, I know Joey's working on his, we're working on ours, the village is working on theirs. It's going to be a long recovery process, but every time we have one of these, um, we're still trying to push the message that. We want to fix it right the first time, temporarily fixing it to back to what it was, really does us no good, and it's a waste of taxpayer dollars and our time. Let us fix it right the first time, so that when this happens next year, like we know it's going to. This won't happen, hopefully, to the devastation that we had this year. Um, there is a preliminary plan in place that we're kind of, we're helping support with the racetrack. We're trying to get the whole plan top to bottom put together, because that's their concern, they're going to kind of invest all this money. Um, and they want to make sure that we have solutions from top to bottom, because like I just said, as this happens next year, they want it to be. Not the same problem they have this year, so, um. That's being really coordinated through them and the state, we're supporting them how we can, so. Um, the other little project we'll talk about real quick, I got two more things, training center. We have a training center that we're looking at putting in a regional uh. Firefighter and uh, law enforcement center out by the airport. Uh, we've been requesting funding on that, we'll put in some rent money for that, and we're trying to get that off the ground, we're going to be looking at some layouts and ground plans. Trying to get that decided where we want, and we'll think that'll be a good thing, so we'll keep you updated on that, because we very much want y'all to be a part of that as well. Um, we also had a really good meeting the other day with Councilwoman Miller regarding our transit program. Um, as they kind of are transitioning out, we had a good conversation regarding uh, the potential of the county taking that on. So we had a meeting with Joey and Councilwoman Miller, and we're going to do some evaluation on that and. Partner with the bill or the city and see if we can't continue that program, it seems like they did a lot of good for everybody. And uh, the citizens around here, so we're going to try to keep that service ongoing through our senior services program. And with the village and the city and the county, so that'll be good, we appreciate her reaching out on that. Um, the only living little item I was going to touch on today. Uh, I don't know if everyone saw it, but there was a press release yesterday that Senator Nick Paul resigned. So, just kind of as an F Y I, the county will here soon, we starting the process of the nomination for his replacement. Um, it will be a little bit of a process, we will follow our state statute. Which essentially the way that goes, we will accept all consistent candidates at the county level. We will schedule interviews and essentially vote and select a nomination that we will submit to the governor, or the governor. Um, Boatero County and Chavis County will be going through the same process as District Thirty-three. Both have constituency in all three camps, so. That'll be an ongoing process, just so you kind of know what's happening. But we could probably lose Senator Paul, he missed a good job while he was in office, but we look forward to his replacement and. Working with someone new in there, so. With that, I don't think I have anything else.
Only the sending project.
Yes, sir.
Want to thank you because you uh. Said yesterday is, would anybody like to say something on this? And, and I would like to say again, now there, I, I mentioned two people. The one that I mentioned yesterday is that uh, that we had not talked about. Was the fact that we wouldn't be doing a lot of this, wouldn't be doing the thing if it was not for State Representative Harman Benson. He's the one that got the money for us to be able to do this, and uh. We don't have to, we don't have to make uh, statements of how dangerous. That is to the southwest of us, the raining wind coming from the southwest to the northeast. During the spring that blow so hard, uh, had that salt fire got out of hand, uh, uh. You, you cannot run it, and you barely have time to grab one or two things and get to your car and just, just get out of, get out of town. So, um.
We're hoping the mayor will give us a fighting chance for that, that if we can create these. We'll be able to go have a defensive space that we can, like you said, we can get folks up there and be able to try to get on contained.
So thank you, I, I, I did want to mention that, because he's done such a good job for this district. And we have Tennessee, uh, uh, he couldn't be there, I think he was in Santa Fe. Another name I, I mentioned. Had started to, that Harman Vincent was the only name that I wanted to bring up and be sure that we appreciate what he's done for us. Uh, I did let everybody know there that the other name was Joe Jarvis, I, I made the statement. He's our go-to person. Um, but I, and uh. Paying, emphasizing enough how important he is to the city. And I saw everybody, uh, yesterday got to know that if it has to do with some of these projects.
You make me very, I really would like to say thank you to Jason, because without Jason and the county, the project wouldn't have happened. You know, Harman's money, Harman getting his money, um, it took the county getting involved, getting this project going for the whole reason.
Yes.
So I do appreciate that.
And here you go again, trying, trying to work this and get somebody else. We're talking about you and the good job that you do.
It's all right, sir, I, I, I'm waiting on Julie too, obviously.
It's hard to get him to take any credit, that's reason I brought his name up.
That's good.
And yes, county manager, uh, you're, you're going to get top class.
Mayor.
Yes.
I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, on the thinning, is that all on property or somebody encroaching into the forest?
So, the intent behind that is that it will be both, the barrier is a, a. Even a little word up, but a continuous barrier. Um, with that, there is going to be some forest service now. With that, there will be some additional hoops that we have to jump through on that forest service, the forest service wasn't in attendance yesterday, we've had some. Preliminary conversations with them, um, and they are wanting to participate with us. Um. And we are going to step through with them as partners, and not as unnecessary as on this, to ensure that we comply with their requirements. To be able to thin on their property, but they are.
My second question is if you are successful with the training center for fire and law enforcement. Will that be a state facility where people from all over the state can help?
The intent is to make it a regional facility.
Regional.
So i- if anyone in the state, essentially, yes, it would be, um. We would want it to be for our benefit as a local county and entities, but we want to make it something that. Is regionally a draw, we, the whole goal behind this is second on the drive, we want them to come here, we want them to stay here. We want them to come take the classes here, that get them their firefighters, certain one and two, and that's kind of what we're. Uh, gearing this towards right now, is that as they do their class work, and they can do that wherever they are. Then they can come up here and do their skills testing at the training center, stay in Lincoln County, be in Lincoln County for a few days. Because everyone wants to come here and be in the mountains, be in the trees, because I've done the firefighter training in the hundred and ten degree heat in Carlos. But it ain't fun, this would have been a much better place, so that's the idea, is to put this together as a regional facility that it will be a draw there.
Thank you, councilor.
Okay, when you put this uh, put this all together, is there going to be a charge to the, to the entities that send people to this uh, training center?
So we're working through that with our O E S office and Aaron and Brian. What we think, and then I don't want to speak a hundred percent on this yet, but, um. It's my understanding that the state fire marshal will pick up the cost as long as you're a volunteer department or an entity. Um, if it's an individual, there might be some costs associated with it. But as long as it's an entity extending on the state fire marshal. And that's how support works, that's how we want to get work, because essentially the whole point of this is to have it as a net zero facility.
And place the, the place on it, while it, it might be the same way.
We're going to make that available special for our local friends, um. And, and just so you can kind of tell what we putting for on our uh, outdoor rep grants and indoor shooting ranch. So that there's several aspects of that that include a milo system, some of those deals, that they could do some advanced training on this, um. But anyone within the county, like I said, we're going to make that available, because we want all our folks here trained as best they can be. So we can have the best law enforcement in the state, um, anyone else that comes from outside will find out how that's paid for.
Case, okay.
Yes, sir, just to, but the idea is not to make money on it to be put to be net zero. Instructors, light bills, just so that it's not a draw on taxpayer dollars.
No, too many, has the grant already been brought in to get this started, or are you still trying to put in?
So we have, we, we've requested uh, multiple funding sources for different aspects of it. We submitted some federal congressional money last year, um, from Representative Stanbury's off, Stan's very's office. That's also one of the things that's uh, hinging on approved budget for the federal government right now. Um, and then we also put in for an outdoor rep grant for the shooting range, so we'll see if we get that, that's a competitive process if it was ever here. So we'll see what happens, this is going to be something that'll be a dealing as we go. Thanks, man.
One more thing to say.
Yes, ma'am.
So, county manager Burns, I like you, and guess what, you have made time. You have made time for concerns for our residents and to go meet with us on this, I, I really appreciate you. All my years as city councilor, I haven't talked to county managers hardly ever. So, you're sure welcome here, and I love your reports, and thank you for your concerns about quality of life of our people.
That's fine, we're going to make these more of a regular deal, you're right, so we will, thank you for putting on the agenda and allowing us to meet with you. Um, yeah, we'll see you here soon, for the, thank you for letting us know, we'll be attached. Okay.
No, I'm good.
Okay, that was just a, a rough day, so no everything, but thank you. First item of the, of the new business is approval of the torment of Israel's fatwa. As an alternate board member to the village of Redo's slash city of Redo's Downs. Wastewater freedom uh, plant, plant, and that would be on the J U B, which is uh, joint use board. Joey.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the appointment of Israel Travis as an alternate board member to the village of Redo's Downs. City of Redo's Downs, on this movement showing up, I'll make the motion for approval.
Does any of the other councilors, would they like to?
I'd like to hear.
Because your motion is made and seconded, and then we have discussions, and then we go.
Go ahead.
Joey, I just love to hear you.
Mayor and members of council, um.
Wait, that's emotional. I said, did you say, thank you.
Mayor, members of council, so at the J U B board, we have to have two members and representatives. Um, usually, I made every one of the last five years, but the last one I couldn't make for those issues, so I need to have, we need to have. A secondary in case the other way it can't be convenient, so that's why I like to point Israel. That's why they, you know, there besides the legislature side, we want somebody to give the infrastructure so we can find out that, so.
And if you have my life, there you go. The village of Red also, uh. They need us for a forum, and they, uh, my understanding is, but we never have that, I've always made them and. And they're doing almost all of them, uh, this way they don't show up, and then there's not a forum. We've been uh, past the experiences, I understand. Where maybe a mayor didn't show up or this kind of thing, they didn't have a forum, and they get pretty upset, but, and we need to be there.
And so, you know, this is coming to you now, I'll get disappointed whenever, whoever the new mayor is, when that time comes, I have to bring this back to you. To do it again.
We did.
Okay, I'm good. Okay, we're ready.
Counselor Lyswell?
Aye.
Counselor Bieber?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Miller?
Aye.
Counselor Proctor?
Aye.
Bye.
Next item is out of C, uh. Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty one. Request for extension of local government road fund program administered by the. New Mexico Department of Transportation and that Joey's.
Mayor members of council. Uh, this is for the D O T road project for Harris Lane. With the disasters, we run out of time. I mean, the job can expire in December. We were hoping to get concrete down, now the concrete, that was their family, father's person of the year was so busy. So I just want to apply for this time extension, give this another year. It doesn't cost any money. Just the finality, I have to get this first to apply for.
We're going to lose.
Yes, sir.
We won't lose nothing.
Sure, we won't lose nothing. We don't lose any time.
I'm making, I'm making the motion to the resolution twenty twenty five point one and request for extension of local government road fund grant. Managed by the Mexican Department of Transportation.
One second.
Councilor Miller.
Hi.
Councilor Lisa.
Hi.
Councilor Bieber.
Yes ma'am.
Councilor Parker.
Thanks, Joey.
Next item is out of the resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty. A resolution of the city of Red Elton Downs governing body approving a cost of living adjustment. For certain employees.
I'm making a motion on that, uh, as read.
Does it count for being a, uh, list of who certain employees are?
It's on the resolution.
Discount for property.
I made a motion on that there on the second. Yes, sir. On this item, uh. There the, with the controversy came up, uh, a couple of meetings back. Uh, during, so we passed it and, uh, for a cola. And what the public works department and the part, uh, listed part, excuse me. Got was not a cola. It was a pay raise that they had put in to get, and that's what they got. And right here it is. So no one has received cola yet. Here it is. And that means that the people from public works, police department. All the people in there, every employee in the city will get that dollar and a half cola. So, I would like to have this either amended now to where all employees get this. To include the people in the city hall. It's, it's, it's probably void on, I think, the seven of them. And then we approve this for police department and public works.
Mayor.
Right, yes.
Okay, so we did a little bit of research on this because there was some confusion, right? I think it's pretty crystal clear that seven positions did not get the cola. Um, and the, uh, I think you recall Mr., uh. Mr. Hannah standing up there and saying, we got raised, but we didn't get a cola. So, uh, Selena and I worked on this. We reviewed the two hours of workshop. Presentation from May. And it does appear that some folks got a cola. But Mr. Hannah was probably right, because I did hear Mr. Underwood indicates that, um. P D got raised, but not a cola. And I do hear, I did hear Mr. Underwood confirm that. Within the meeting minutes of the two hour budget workshop in May. So, at this point in time, it is unclear who got a cola and who got a pay raise now. But ladies did a lot of work on this to show who got what, but it doesn't really identify whether it is increased with a cola or a pay raise. So the way I drafted this resolution was to ratify your action on the seven titles. Giving those folks the cola because they were definitely overlooked. And then paragraph two indicates that the cost of living adjustment. Would only apply to city employees who did not otherwise get a cola. So. What this is telling your staff to do is go back to the table and figure out who got a cola and who got a pay raise, right? The way this is written, I think it captures everyone that you're concerned about, which is those folks who cannot get a cola. Um, I do think. The answer might lie in that May workshop session that you had. But that was kind of meandering too. I mean, this issue of cola came up two different points in time and that was almost a three hour meeting. Um, so again, this is. Carrying out the intent of what you just suggested, Councilor Proctor. But again, we aren't crystal clear and Selena confirmed for me, I don't think we're crystal clear. Based on Mary's work or Donald's work, who got a, a cola and got a raise. And Mary.
Yes.
We have Mary and Donna on Zoom. Uh, Mary. She, they are on, uh.
But she still can't tell us.
I'm here, but it was my understanding on this subject and they. We gave them all the figures and they did this resolution, which. I haven't, I had nothing to do with the resolution side of the things. I, it was my understanding. That at the last meeting, you approved the seven employees that were overlooked. For the dollar fifty that everyone else got and that at this meeting. I know counselor Bieber and everyone agreed that the three employees that only got the dollar. Needed to be included, so they got the fifty cents. And I believe that was the instruction I was given. What has happened since then is a lot of confusion based on verbiage. And the way it was presented and what wasn't presented. I know at the budget workshop. It was a meeting from nine A M. until four thirty P M. Um, not three hours. It was all day. And, but that's neither here nor there. I know when everyone was presenting. There was confusion on the verbiage. At one point, the, the chief said. Yeah, whatever Mary said, cola, cola. He said twice and then the words got all twisted around again. And I'm not going to get into what is politically correct on what happened. I'm going to stand with counselor Proctor. If he wants to give everyone, like he said, so everybody is treated equally. That's fine, but I have no other input on the clarification because the way I read the. Resolution is we're right back to giving everybody a dollar fifty cola except for the seven that were, that didn't receive the raise. To begin with, so. Maybe I'm misinterpreting that, but my instructions I thought were very clear at the last meeting. Which was please make sure that everybody that didn't get the dollar fifty gets the dollar fifty. If it's the three employees that only got the dollar, please make sure they get the fifty cents. If there's anyone else, please include them. That, that's what I understood was supposed to happen and. This is where you are with what is being presented, so.
Go ahead, um, our attorney, city attorney, but I could probably respond.
Uh, uh, hold it, it's second because we may have to come back. Counselor Proctor asked something. It may be, we, it needs to be said now.
Okay, I have talked to the directors of both departments, police department, public works. They put in for a pay raise. That's what it says here, wages. They put in for a pay raise. And the pay raise for public works was only for three to four people that were below the standards. Counselor Bieber made a comment to the public works director saying, why don't you give the whole department a pay raise? We approve that as a paid wage increase. Now then, the police department came in and they did the same thing and we restricted it to certified police officers only. And they would get that dollar and a half increase raise that they were asking for when they become certified. And then the other people were cut fifty cents to the wage to one dollar. And that was not a cola. That was a pay raise. What I'm saying now, I don't see where anyone got cola in the city. That's the way I understand it. Regardless of all the words or anything, I've talked to the two entities that are involved in this. And this here is pay raise, not cola.
All right, uh, before we go to the city attorney. It, it, was honor Miller be able to?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we should hear you. Go ahead.
What? Does someone have a question?
Yes ma'am. Donna, can you figure out who got colas and who did not? That's, that's, that's our problem right now. We just not need to know who got pay raises and who didn't get cola.
Okay, I, I thought it was, I was like counselor Proctor. I thought they were just pay wage increases. I didn't think it's getting a cola increase. But I, I didn't, I didn't attend the budget workshops. I don't know exactly what was said there. I just know there were seven people that didn't get any type of increase.
Okay, but that's what we're saying, Donna. The colas, nobody got colas. Everybody got pay raises.
That's what I thought. Correct? That's what, that's the way I thought it happened.
Counselor Proctor?
Okay, this is, this is what happens. When you remove people from pay raises, cola and things like this. The only people that have that authority are sitting at this table right now on the advice of our attorney. That's what we need to ask if we take anybody off of it. We have not worried on taking anyone off of anything. So this is why. That, that this got. Well, I'm putting my stick aside on my good Lord, he has one that's already gone. So. No one has the right, when you say this is cola, no one has the right. Not even us, I don't believe, has the authority to say, you don't get it because you ain't been here long enough. You don't get it because you haven't worked hard enough. Cola is cola. End of the story.
Okay, then it takes us to the, to the city attorney.
Uh, yes, mayor. So I just want to read what, uh, section two says. It says a cost of living adjustment. Of a dollar fifty per hour is hereby approved for all city employees. Who did not otherwise receive. Via the budget process for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. This cola adjustment shall not apply to municipal board employees. So I think the language there allows you to do what you want to do, which is give everyone a cola that did not otherwise get a cola. I couldn't tell from listening to the video. Who got what? Other than I did confirm that what Mr. Hannah said, which was that P D did not get the cola. I did hear that pretty quick.
Yes.
Right. What I didn't hear was, what, what was the rest of it? What did, what did the rest of city all get? So at this point in time, I'm not clear whether or not there was a cola granted or not. If this is all that was received. By anybody since budget workshop. It does appear that everyone got a pay raise and not a cola. So the language of the resolution is still. In the sense that it says anyone who didn't get a cola, now he has a cola. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this, uh. All this, uh, what I was reading at, uh, this winter was that. The directors put in for the pay raise for their department. The departments in city hall, we have B N G, we have finance, we have the city clerk. They could have put in forty dollar, a dollar and a half pay raise as they wish. But they didn't. So, the finance director came to us and saying she eliminated those few people. Because she didn't know whether there's enough money to budget to cover those few people. We're talking like thirty thousand dollars for a few people. So, this, this is now that we got it ironed out, regardless of who got a pay raise increase. Those same people are now going to get another dollar and a half in cola. Across the board. And that's the only fair way I see it as doing it.
On top of this green line that they already got?
Yep.
Maybe on top of that, but.
Yes, and go ahead.
So, at the workshop, P D public works got a dollar fifty pay raise with the three employees got a dollar.
Yes.
Then we had a preliminary was not mentioned. Then the final amendment was mentioned. When we brought last meeting, the seven employees to you as a cola, it shouldn't have been as. The language shouldn't have read as cola. It should have just been wage increase. Because now you have the scales tipped. So, this red, so we're right back at square one. If this resolution is passed. The total for this cola for everybody. Uh, not including the seven because they've already gotten it, will be a hundred and twenty eight thousand, a hundred and thirty two dollars and fifteen cents. If we do this cola. So, the left. No, this for everybody. This is A to Z, everybody.
I mean, on top of this green line.
Yes, on, yes, on top of this green line. This green line on your graph shows the dollar fifty that was approved. At the budget workshop for P D and, uh, public works and then now the seven that work for this last B. Who should have been a wage increase, not a cola. So regardless of the language. This resolution adds an additional dollar fifty. Donna, can you confirm?
Okay, just, just say.
Done.
All right. After Counselor Proctor got through the talk. It seemed like it was simple. It was understood. I'm going to go ahead and let you talk, but. Don't confuse the issue. We've got it right now. After he got through, we understand and could vote on it. You're, I hope you're not going to butt into what.
I mean, it's just clarified. What my recollection was at the budget hearing is. Uh, the director of public works came and said, I'm going to take position out of my budget and split it up and share it with the rest of the employees. Same thing with D C Hannah. He came in and said, we're going to eliminate one of our. Police officer positions and take that wage and spread it around with the rest of the employees. So they gave themselves. Raises within their own budget. There wasn't anything with changing. The money in, that was involved in their department. Is that not how?
No, I did.
I thought you took a position and.
I would always ask for work position, but I'm really. Mayor members of council, uh, I actually put in the budget, the couple of positions I had that were making just a hair of an end wage. And when I brought that to, to you, you discussed it. Counselor Bieber said, why don't we just do two dollars across the border, a dollar fifty? We negotiated that. That's where that came from. And then Sam came behind me when they seen that public works did that and they asked them the same thing. We asked for it. Cost of livings come from counseling to make. I've been here, you know, twenty years and it's something, the mayor, the council. You know, every, whatever, every five years, you're going to give a three percent cost of living that's across the board. So that what we got was not a cost of living, right? I don't know what happened on the seven up here that wasn't involved.
I'm just glad I did. Dream all of this.
Counselor Proctor?
Okay, now. Those departments, we can approve them with cola with the rest of the city. And those departments and flip outs can come back and that's for a dollar and a half. Increase, or they can turn this into a dollar and a half increase. It's still moving forward with the cola or cancel the cola completely out. Now, I don't know if, if, uh, Mary told me it was in the budget. The cola budget. If it is, then let's go with A. Pass this with the rest of the city and let them, let those departments put in for the budget in half an hour. And if it goes through, it goes through, da 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 da.
Are you okay? What we're, do you understand what we're saying?
I think I understand what you're saying, mayor, or counselors, um. You know, the, 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 the disconnect is when you all pass your budget in May. Do, um. Did, did the city then implement a cola in or a pay increase? And again, it's unclear. Um, this chart really doesn't say one way or the other what happened. Um, so again, the resolution just simply says, if you didn't get a cola, now you get a. Dollar test. Um, and then it did, of course, ratify the cola for the seven employees that you approved.
Counselor Proctor, the first time I ever, uh, this was the first time I ever heard the word cola. Was when Mary was sitting in meeting at the few meetings back before you're sitting right now and the word cola came up. With these, with these few people. And that's the first time I've ever run that off.
Okay, because we, I, I, I know what we done. I went back down through my watches and found what we did.
I can remember pretty well that we gave pay raises for the departments that come in and ask for.
Yes.
And that's where everybody. I don't remember mentioning a cola. Just pay raises.
And there, there was discussion in the May workshop about cola. And multiple questions were asked. Is this a pay raise or a cola? Clarifications, why Mr. Underwood are, this is a pay raise, not a cola. So what's unclear again is. Did anybody get a cola? And if nobody, so I, I, I had the same number, right? When I was drafting this, I had the same. And if nobody, so I, I had the same number, right, when I was drafting this, I had the same problem. Which is why I wrote it the way I wrote it, which is, if you didn't get a cola, now you're getting a cola. So it doesn't matter, the way it's written, it doesn't matter who got one or not, it will be up to Mary and Donna and Selena. To confirm or determine who did or didn't get one, but the way the resolution was written, if you didn't get one, you're getting one now.
So we, so we need to wait?
Nope, I don't think so, no, I mean, you'll, you'll be directing staff to implement it and figure it out. Donna?
Yes.
You confirm that you just were told to do a paid increase for public works and police, correct? Donna, can you hear me?
What, Selena?
Uh, to repeat, you were instructed to add wages increase. To public works and police only, there was no word of cola being brought to your attention, is that correct back in July?
That's correct.
Okay.
So that, so that determination is, was not a cola, it was a wage increase. The last meeting with the seventh, I don't know if that could be amended to say not cola, just wage increase, I don't know how that can be. Remedied?
We can remedy that now in this meeting with, um, you know, with an amendment to the.
Okay, let me just say, make sure I'm on the same page and everything, so all this increase in the green, that's gonna go beside the cola. They're gonna get cola on top of all of this.
Yes, Donna, can you confirm, did you say the green, Donna created this? Donna, did you hear uh, councillor Baker's question?
No.
Donna, this money that's in the green line.
Right, that's, that's. I did a dollar fifty increase for all the employees, and I was asked to. Um, so that, say how much it would be, how much it would cost the city in payroll taxes with the para increase.
That was a hundred and twenty thousand?
Yes. It includes everyone except the court.
So everybody that got the raises, that was a raise, we're gonna give everybody a cola now, correct?
Or.
Yes, no, I'm just asking, okay.
Yeah, if council approves it.
Okay, no, I was just, okay, I'm good.
Okay, councillors.
I have a question.
Okay.
So, what I thought I heard Selena say is, if we reword the dollar fifty for those administrative employees. Don't call it a cola, call it a dollar fifty wager. We can stop right there and nobody gets a cola, because everybody already got a wager.
You're correct.
Okay, well.
Sorry, there's a, yeah, that, to me, that makes more sense right now than adding a hundred and twenty one dollars.
Just the wage increase, that's what we'll do, let's do it then.
Okay. Make a motion, yeah.
How would you?
It might be a different motion.
Okay, to amend that resolution, or totally, I understand what we're trying to do, um, so. Um, are you saying if you are not gonna add cola now, you're gonna have just a wage increase?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, on top of the wage increase that's already indicated on this.
No.
This, those, those, these, these seven people were not gonna vote cola for the whole city. Pay raises went in, and they did put in for the pay raise, so this is what we're gonna give those seven people in there. Plus the fire chief, um, seven, six people, seven.
There was seven including the fire chief then?
Including the fire chief, so.
Instead of the cola, right.
Be ratifying the seven that you did at the last meeting.
Right.
Okay, so then in that case, section one would need to be simply amended to indicate that. As discussed and approved in the open meeting held on September twenty second, a pay raise of a dollar fifty per hour is hereby ratified to the following files. So you would substitute the words a cost of living adjustment with pay raise, if that's what you wanna do.
And then do we delete section two completely, because there was, will, at that point, we know.
She wants a pay raise.
And then it depends on what you wanna do, do you wanna give everyone a cola now, it seems like they got a pay raise, were, have we confirmed that they did get the pay raise?
We confirm that public works and police department got a dollar fifty back in July, and then with the seven.
And the girl, and the girls got the dollar.
And then there was, the three got the dollar, the three, three got a dollar.
Okay, so then maybe section two needs an amendment that says, um. A pay raise of a dollar fifty per hour is hereby approved for all city employees who did not receive a pay raise in the budget process. So that's not right?
Yes.
So we're taking out all references to cola and instead inserting the word pay raise. And anyone that didn't get one in May, June, now gets one.
Yes ma'am, what we're doing, this is, we're doing the job of the finance director.
Correct.
City clerk.
Correct.
And P and Z.
Right.
And HR and.
Right, and HR, and on that, and the fire chief. So, we're covering their bases too, so if anybody gets this, we write it off and put cola back on the burner that's not lit.
Okay.
Okay, then, can we, can we tell, a motion, uh, councillor, all you would need to do, I think. To say, I'll make a motion to do what the city attorney just said.
Yeah, I make a, I make a motion approving the pay request over and stretch out the cola. Cost of living adjustment, and it'd be a pay raise for the seven people that did not get a pay raise. Second, retro act, back to September twenty second.
Good.
I say.
We have a motion and a second.
Councillor Lee Swann.
Aye.
Councillor Dylan.
Aye.
Councillor Proctor.
Aye.
Councillor Baker.
Yes ma'am.
Motion care.
Okay, next, uh, next item. Is item D. And I see only discussion, uh, on the city of Riddles available municipal board budget increase. And that would be Judge Plant?
Council, um, I'm here today because when I did my budget. I did not include the increase that you guys approved for the budget position. Because that wasn't on the table back in June, and so I'm here to ask that my budget be increased. I do want to say, in my defense, the last five years, we've never zeroed out our budget. We have never come close to zeroing out our budget, we give money back every, every single year. So, um, I try to be frugal, and go no, but I come in, I ask for things I really need. But I was not prepared for that seven thousand, I will not be signing up for P E R A in January. I have my own retirement plan with my other employer, and so. There's no need to worry about P E R A conditions, we just need the seven.
Seven?
Yes, because it's seven months, well, the next budget year, until the next budget, that a thousand dollars a month.
So that's January through July?
Um, yes, right, so even if it had been a new judge coming in, they would have done the same. Yeah, so we'll just be January to July.
When you submitted this for the agenda, did you word it like that, discussion, and I mean, it seems like we should be able to take action on this right now, did you ask for it?
Well, I think we have to discuss it, my understanding is with, everything has to be discussed first, and then I can go back on the twenty seven. And on the twenty seventh, I'm more than happy to renew, except for how much money I gave back with me in each year for my budget. But, but yeah, I, I, and then finally, we have tried. Um, but I just don't know how to squeeze out seven thousand older kind of my budget.
For whatever, it was, we upgraded before you got, yeah, no.
Right, right, so I, I put in for that budget in June, it was put in place July one. This wasn't when voted on until this.
Now, we couldn't give your, you couldn't put your raise in the budget, and that would have been approved yet, so.
Well, we had, you know, been discussed, it was only in effect, also in January, yeah. So, I, I'm fine with you guys discussing it, I just, I, I needed to get it out there because it's going to be a problem in the two months.
It will be before the November, uh, about the election time, if we haven't approved by election time, miss an envelope.
Mister Mayor, members of council, may I address?
Just a minute, councillor Baker.
Ms. Winter?
Yes sir.
What do you say?
In terms of the budget?
Can we, can we, it's just discussion, can we ask?
No.
Good.
It's just discussion only, so we'll put back on our next, next, next meeting for action.
No worries, I was just asking.
And she's indicating she has time.
Things don't change November third, and change January.
Correct, and councillor, please, which is to address your inquiry, we weren't, had enough time to give judge the exact number. We wanted to make sure it got on the agenda, so that she at least had time to prepare.
We're, we're fine, yeah, we're fine, I, I, again.
Okay, Mary, Mary, go ahead.
Mister Mayor, members of council, in a situation like this, where they're actually changing the ordinance, and they did do that. And, um, the raise will go into effect on January, that is a budget requirement, that's a requirement, not a request. Um, so it would automatically have to be increased in order to pay those expenditures out. And it would be presented to you as a budget adjustment, uh, by resolution. Because it's not a want, it's a requirement, so it would, it absolutely would have to happen. That's all I had, I just wanted to say it would, it's definitely, um. Something that has to happen, because it's already, you guys have already approved it to go into action.
Sounds like it does need. So cap, so winter, I do not have to put this on the next agenda, just to clarify, it is already a requirement, it won't be on the next agenda, right? The only aim come on is budget resolution, it will be on the table, but the resolution.
That is correct, that is correct.
I just wanted to clarify.
That would be the first meeting in January, correct, Mary?
No.
We can, I can do the budget adjustment at any time, we know we have to increase it by six months. So the six thousand dollars, I could put it on this, um, budget adjustment. It, it's going to affect the budget, so when I put it on there, is, doesn't matter, as long as it's in there before she runs out of money.
Yes. That, that is sort of the better.
Well, as long as it, look, I just wanna clarify for the record, Mary, I, I'm not. Gonna be required to move money from other places to cover this, that seven.
We are literally, we are literally going to increase your budget by six thousand dollars on that line.
Just cut her a thousand while we're talking.
Well, I guess it would be six, because it'll be January to June, and then, then at the end of June, and then July, the new budget, because she's right, it would be six.
Right, and then it won't just be six thousand, it will also include the, uh. Withhold, the taxes as well, so, but that, that will not, you will not have to remove any money, that is just an extra. I mean, that's been done by resolution, it's gonna be by ordinance, I mean, this is just, it's a mandatory move, it's not a request.
Alright, Mayor, hold it right there, uh, city attorney?
Mister Mayor, I think what Mary's speaking to is the actual item is a bar, what we call a bar, a budget adjustment. Okay, so that's what Mary's speaking to.
Thank you very much, that was easy.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mary.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, let's discuss it item only, so we will own new business, we will vote to item L. Approval of Dustin Rushing for the position of utility clerk, slash administrative assistant. In accordance, uh, accordance with N M S A nineteen seventy eight, section three dash eleven. Dash six. Mary, will you, uh, enlighten us on this?
Yes, Mister Mayor, members of council, um, we did have, uh, two applicants that applied for the position. Uh, we had one that came in for an interview, and I hope most of you have had a chance to introduce yourselves and meet Dustin. Um, I think that she is going to be a great asset to the city. She is a lifelong country, uh, excuse me, county residence. And, um, her father is Rusty Silva, for those of you that remember Rusty, when he was in the assessor's office. For many, many years, um, that's her dad. And I am asking permission to go ahead and hire her and make her official.
Yes.
I hope that we approve Dustin Rushing for the position of utility clerk administrative assistant. In accordance with N M S A nineteen seventy eight, section three, eleven, I'll second that.
Yeah, the laws that I'm saying.
Councillor Proctor?
Aye.
Councillor Baker?
Yes ma'am.
Councillor Lee Swann? Hi, Catherine Miller.
Hi, Councillor Harris.
Thank you so much.
I M G, we have already done, it takes us, uh, on our new business item H, resolution twenty twenty five. Dash twenty three, authorizing certain officials to execute, execute car titles. Let's give it a turn.
Mister Mayor, councillors, so it exposed my attention that, um, some titles were. Uh, executed by, uh, Miss Ellie Haron in the past, um, unfortunately. Department of Motor Vehicles is seeking, um, confirmation that Miss Haron had the authority to sign a title. Based on some research with staff, it does not appear that this council has approved a new resolution. That actually authorized signatories on car titles, so I created that resolution, and I did two things with it. The first thing I do is I, you are going to be ratified. Um, Ellie Haron, the city clerk's authority to sign, at the time she was clerk. For any car titles that were executed on or before September twenty second. From that point forward, section two indicates that, um, Mayor Platoon and Mayor. Will be the authorized signatures on car titles. So, um, just because D M B might need it, banks might need it. Um, you need something, a piece of paper that says this person has gone and signed, and this is the document that would take care of that. For hope.
So this needs to be an action on?
It is an action.
Okay. We have a motion, I made a motion to approve resolution, resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty three, authorizing certain officials to execute car titles.
I'll second that.
Mayor?
Yes, uh, when you said the mayor and mayor pro temp, those are the two people that's supposed to be authorized to sign the title, right?
Well, that is, you know, up to this body, um, right now, you don't have a permanent city clerk position.
Right.
Um. You know, you might, you can change this resolution again in January, you know, and I, I'm assuming that you're going to do that again in January, you'll change this again.
Is it usually the city clerk till then, or?
In a, in a strong mayor, government, no, it's usually the mayor. So this is a strong mayor, government, usually it'd be the mayor signing, um, but sometimes mayor's absent, so in, in that instance, I indicated myself.
And as long as it says mayor, mayor pro temp, doesn't matter what name or who the new mayor is.
Yes, Karen.
Miss Winter, would it make sense to, instead of designating a name in there, say, would be signed by the mayor or mayor pro temp and just leave it open?
Well, you could, but you'll have a new council in January, and may they wanna redesignate all this all together, you know what I'm saying? Like, you will have a new squad from January, and they may decide that they don't want, pretend that all they want is city clerk. So, um, but if you only wanna put the titles in there, you can certainly only put the titles in there now. Um, what I'm suggesting is that, my guess is, the next council will change this again.
Okay, this.
We've never done it before, so I'm not sure they'd think about it.
Yeah, it came up because one of the cars, one of the vehicles you sold, um, he cannot get the title clear. Because Ellie signed it, and D M B is like, who's Ellie?
Yeah.
Right, so, um, and I, you know, talking with some scat, it does appear that you are auctioning vehicles from time to time. Yeah, there's, can at least three that I'm aware of.
Oh, there's a lot more than?
I bet.
But what I'm saying is, a resolution like this has never come up before, I see the importance of it now. But by naming it, just leaving ambiguous mayor or mayor pro temp, we, we could even modify it to say mayor, mayor pro temp, or. City clerk, and not put any names in there.
You could do that. Um, I, I would. I put the names in there because in fact, um, D M B needs clarification that Ellie Haron. Basically had the, the authority to sign, if you leave it vague, I worry that D M B is going to. Say, well, how do I know that he's the mayor now? So I think the names in there, that's my recommendation, it remains in there, that person signs. Hands the resolution with the, with the title to the D M B clerk, and they, it all matches up. If you put mayor and pro temp, the clerk could look at that person and say, well, how do I know who signed that is in fact the mayor?
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
So, and again, if. So, and again, if you're, if you're disposing of this many vehicles, it could be that from January, somebody wants to change it again.
Well, remind us in January to update this.
We have a motion on the floor, Mayor. Are you ready for, are you ready for, uh, go call? We have a motion in a second on the floor.
Uh, in a second, okay, we're ready.
Counselor Miller.
Aye.
Counselor baseball.
Aye.
Counselor Baker.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Proctor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I, I, new business. Update for Loop Communications Services. The attorneys. Yes.
Uh, so, Mayor, members of council, prior last instruction, what the judge is concerned, oh. We did take care of the Loop Communications, as of the next day, September twenty third, at ten thirty four, I received confirmation email from Loop. Saying that all recording is, was disabled from courts and P D, uh, email confirmation. Uh, later on, September thirtieth, uh, Mr. Judge did, uh, request that, uh, herself and Maria would have. Authorization to adjust their extension lines, November thirtieth, about email confirmation that that was set in place.
But it wasn't, it was still recording on the twenty third.
Yes, we did find that out, we.
It was recording for about a week after.
But we did get those deleted, right, just we can.
Yes.
Okay. Uh. Now, on a, we do have, um, the prompt for all residents, anyone who called into city hall. Automatically will receive the, this call has been reported for quality assurance, X, Y, and Z, uh, that was implemented the next day on September twenty third. Have. The, some of the lines recorded, the ones who are not, is including human resources, P D and courts. Um, they have been disabled, and I got confirmation of that yesterday, so all others are, but at least the residents have that prompt. And that takes care of the court, the court's request, they, they're all good, and the new count, whoever comes in here will. Uh, be otherwise. So that's all good.
Just go. Are the calls like that to public works, are those being recorded as well?
So.
They used to be, I don't know.
Yes, we did get, so, uh, I do have an email also, that the recording feature was enabled upon onboarding, so it was just included. There was no authority to implement it, it was included in the services from Loop. So there was no authorization, so.
Didn't seem to be, I mean, when did we switch to Loop, every time we've ever switched companies, we've.
I believe, yes, it was on the agenda, I believe it's in twenty twenty three, I don't know the meeting right offhand, but I can get that if you, if you.
Loop is our fiber, part of the fiber insurance.
Yeah, I don't know the date, the date.
Which is actually very good, because we recorded. People saying things that weren't accurate, we were able to go back and say, oh, man, you know, this is what you said.
We've had, yeah, two instances where our utility clerk was challenged. And, uh, the recordings was full for just that timeframe, and the resident was able to hear herself. Um, so, we're all good, that's all I got.
There you go, Dave. That's, that's up to you, guys, thank you for saving business and we're adjourned.